Good evening, everyone. Time is 6:30 on May 18th, 2021. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. Roll call. All council members are present with the exception of our newest council member, Mr. Boyd. He had a previous engagement for tonight. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Powell, you lead us in the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we're so grateful to be here tonight, to be together with good friends in a great city on a beautiful day. Lord, not to be wearing a mask is a sweet thing. We can see faces of those creations that you have made that smile back at us, Lord. And we give you glory for bringing us vaccines and smart people to create ways that we could get free of that disease. Lord, we just ask for a season of your favor where great industries can come to our area to make our economy stronger, where government can truly operate freely with public hearings so that we can all be together to express ourselves in person with our smiles and frowns together, Lord. And tonight, we just ask you to bless this meeting, which expresses that democracy in the most beautiful way. We ask you to bless those who work at our city, bless those who care for this city and who support it with all of their resources and their giving, Lord. We just thank you for this place, and we pray a prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Powell. I do have a few announcements this evening. Municipal court is tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. in our community room. Planning Commission meets May the 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the Social Circle Theater. Our tree board meeting shows May 27th at 6:00 in the community room. I believe that has been canceled. Our next council work session is June the 3rd at 6:30 p.m., also at the theater. Main Street Commission meeting, June 8th, 8:00 a.m., Church at the Grove. Our Georgia Initiative for Community Housing meeting is also June the 8th at 10:00 a.m. via Zoom. Historic Preservation Meeting, also June the 8th, 6:00 p.m. at the community room. And our next council meeting is June the 15th, 6:30 p.m., Middle School Activity Center. And before we move on from there, I do have an announcement to make. We are, we're going to get as far as we can through the agenda. One of our council members needs to leave for about 15 minutes. There's 15, 20 minutes or so at 7:45 until 8:00. So I will be suspending the council meeting during that period of time for Ms. Price to go watch her son get awarded next door. So I am honored to allow her to do that, but we will be suspending the meeting depending on how far we get by that time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have presentations. First is employee recognition.
I would like to recognize and introduce Robbie Groves, who is our new Public Works and Water Resources Director. Robbie Groves has been serving as interim for nine months or so in the position. After a career with industry focusing on safety and compliance, Robbie has been with the city since 2015 in a variety of roles, from customer service through utility billing, environmental compliance, to interim director of Public Works, and now Public Works Director. She is extremely capable, and through her positions with the city, has learned the breadth of city services and the needs and values of the community, and fulfilled all roles to date with exceptional customer service, teamwork, and a can-do attitude. She's been recognized by her peers at the city as the Employee of the Year in 2018. Robbie has built strong relationships with our regulatory agencies and reinforced the commitment that Social Circle operations will meet or exceed all standards, and will work, we will work with those agencies towards solving problems, sharing information, and public education to reinforce transparency and compliance across all sectors. Robbie is a vested community member, known for her involvement with schools, her church, and local activities, ranging from chili cook-offs to trivia contests. Her commitment to the city is personal as well as professional. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration and a Master's in Business Administration with a focus on human resources. While serving as an interim Public Works Director for the last nine months, she brought forth her personal management skills, personnel management skills, and built respect and a disciplined approach to the broad Public Works Department roles. This position, the Public Works Director, was advertised, and applications were received from across the region. An extensive multi-panel interview process was used to ascertain the best candidate for the Public Works Director. Although each candidate brought forth a different mix of expertise and experience, Ms. Groves was the best fit for the position in the view of every panel. She is the right person at the right time for the Public Works Department. She has risen to every challenge with the support of her staff during this last year in the interim position, and we have no doubt she will continue to do the same. We congratulate Robbie Groves as the city's Public Works and Water Resource Director.
All right. Next up, we have a presentation for the Lions Club Lionhearted Fund.
Step to the microphone for us. Thank you.
Last month in April, we did the Lions and Lionhearted Golf Tournament again, and I'm proud to report that we've managed to donate $1,400 to the police department for this year, an increase of $100 from last year.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it.
Certainly.
Thank you. Mr. Drayer will accept that check.
Sure. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, sir.
Thanks again.
For the benefit of those that aren't familiar with it, the Lionhearted Fund was established by the Lions Club to support community policing initiatives.
Next up, we have the Downtown Rundown.
Ms. Amber McGivern.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The picture on the screen is from our concert that we had on Friday night. That was the first concert in our summer concert series at Friendship Park. We had a great turnout. The next concert is going to be on June 11th. Our citywide cleanup is coming up this weekend. It will be on May 22nd. We will meet at the community room at 8:00 a.m. Groups are encouraged to get their supplies and go do their pickups, and the litter critter will be there for photo ops. Next on my list is the Independence Day Celebration. This event has been confirmed with moving downtown this year. The Main Street Commission did vote to increase our budget for that event so we can have fireworks in downtown. So we're working on possibly having another car show for the first portion of the day with vendors and kids' activities leading up to concerts in the park before the fireworks that night. Vendor application is available online for that event now. Also, the Friendship Festival application is available online. We opened that up two weeks ago. It can be found on our city website and on our Facebook page, as well as at the Welcome Center. The last event on my list for tonight is the Blue Star Ceremony. The Garden Club and the American Legion Auxiliary will be dedicating a Blue Star marker in Friendship Park on June 14th at 10:00 a.m., so everyone is invited to attend. That's it.
Thank you, Amber. Any questions? Thank you. We have someone signed up for citizen's requests. Mr. Gunn, are you here? I don't believe he is present. Do we have any council requests? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. We now have a series of five public hearings. First one is an amendment to the comprehensive plan within the Gateway Interchange Character Area. Ms. Barbara, do you have a staff report?
I think I'll be doing the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Thank you. The city's comprehensive plan provides a vision for the Gateway Interchange Area and defines the city zoning districts that are compatible with this vision. Since the Stanton Springs Business Park Zoning District is envisioned, it's not currently defined within the comprehensive plan. Therefore, this would consider an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan that would identify that the Stanton Springs Business Park District would be a compatible zoning district within the Gateway Interchange Area. That is the only change within this comprehensive plan amendment recommendation. The Gateway Interchange Area is the area shown in blue on the map with the red arrow is highlighting to it, and that is identified as a specific character area within the Social Circle Comprehensive Plan, which encourages a commercial and mixed-use employment center area, which presents prominent distinctive landscaping and a sense of arrival from the interchange. Large-scale buildings are well set back, landscaped, and accessed through consolidated entrances. The zoning compatibility includes commercial, industrial, office, and institutional, and this change would add the Stanton Springs Business Park as a zoning compatible district. This amendment was advertised as required, and this evening's public hearing is a required element of the consideration process. I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions?
Does it include the entire blue area or just?
It includes, it lists the Stanton Springs Business Park as, excuse me, as a compatible zoning district within the entire blue area, but it doesn't rezone it. There are a series, a number of districts that are listed as compatible within this area. It just adds one to the list.
All right. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor for comments. For anyone that's here to speak in favor, please come forward. Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition, please come forward. Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to the, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a decision.
Y'all make a motion to approve it?
Motion from Councilmember Shelton, second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a, two separate items for the same piece of property. The first is a text amendment for the Stanton Springs Business Park North.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you an application for the text amendment for the Stanton Springs Business Park District. Stanton Springs Business Park has a purpose and an intent. The Stanton Springs Business Park District is intended to provide large tracts of land suitable for the planned development of mixed-use business park that provides new jobs and increases the tax base. It shall provide an attractive environment well suited to manufacturing, research, development, professional offices, laboratories, biomedical, pharmaceutical, data centers, and related commercial warehousing and industrial use. Other types of heavy industrial that would be objectionable by reasons of producing dust, odor, air pollution, water pollution, noise are not permitted. It is part of a large-scale development of 600 acres or more located in at least two contiguous counties. It is a development under a single unified entity providing control of property development. It contains a mixture of uses. It provides adequate infrastructure for current and future transportation, water resource management, and community services. Others would be designated from time to time by the city council. You do have a package, in your package, the complete Stanton Springs Business Park ordinance that's being applied for to apply for our zoning, to add to our zoning subdivision, or zoning ordinance, sorry. And Mrs. Gray is here, the applicant, if you, if she would like to speak to the council. If y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Barbara. Mrs. Gray.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be back before you this evening. As Ms. Barbara said, I am here representing the Joint Development Authority of Jasper, Morgan, Newton, and Walton Counties. I'm joined with me tonight by Shane Short, our Economic Development Representative, and we are here asking for you to adopt the Stanton Springs Business Park Ordinance. Hit the next slide. You're very well aware, I know, that Stanton Springs is about a 1,600-acre industrial park development. It is home to Facebook, Takeda, and just last month, we landed our latest project, Bay Mare, which is another data center. As you can see from the map, Bay Mare really developed out the eastern part of our park. And so we're running low on land and looking to expand north. And so that is why we are here with you today, because we're looking to expand Stanton Springs North into the city of Social Circle. Next slide. We're requesting uniform zoning tonight, and this is really just part of an overall, an overall part of the success of Stanton Springs. Stanton Springs is looked at all over the state, all over the region, as a big success based on the number of jobs and tax investment that it's brought to this community. And one of the ways we've been successful is to have the uniform zoning. The four counties have uniform tax assessing, collecting, and distribution. We have a revenue sharing agreement amongst the counties. We coordinate development services, and then we also have consistent utility providers. A little history about the Stanton Springs zoning. When the authority purchased the property back in 2000, an initial zoning was put in place, and that was adopted by the three counties that have land in the park. At that time, like many developments, at that time, it was a live-work-play development with a town center overlay and a residential overlay. As time moved on and the authority landed Baxter and then the Facebook Data Center, we realized that our zoning didn't match the vision for Stanton Springs anymore. And so in 2018, the JDA went to the development professionals in Morgan, Walton, and Newton Counties and said, "Could you please rewrite our ordinance to fit our vision for Stanton Springs," which, as Ms. Barbara mentioned, is, you know, clean industry, more pharmaceutical companies like Takeda, more high-tech companies like Facebook. And so, really led by Judy Johnson for the most part, they rewrote our ordinance, which is what we have asked you to adopt. This ordinance was adopted in the three counties in 2019, as presented to you with just a few minor tweaks to fit the fact that you're a city and not a county. The main components of the new zoning ordinance is that it removed the residential and town center overlay components, because we are an industrial development park. It added some high standards of development that are included in the Stanton Springs Declaration of Protective Covenants, things like no metal-sided buildings and those types of standards. It added a requirement that there be coordination with the Joint Development Authority, again, to make sure everyone's working in harmony and making sure the companies that we have coming in are what everyone want to see. Next slide. So why adopt our ordinance? Well, it works. We have had great success with this ordinance on permitting updates to Takeda and then permitting Facebook and Bay Mare from the ground up. And it's a necessity to market to these large industrial companies that are coming to our communities when they're looking at land that has a footprint in three counties. They want to be assured that they're going to deal with one person, they're going to have one set of regulations to follow. And so uniformity is really key in attracting these large companies. Bay Mare, for example, has a footprint in three different counties, and so, again, it was critical that we had uniform zoning there, and that's what we're asking to do for what we're calling Stanton Springs North. Next slide. The Planning Commission asks, "Well, why can't you just leave it with the mixed-use business park zoning that the city already has?" And their answer is, "Your zoning is great. There's nothing wrong with your zoning. It is fine, but what we're asking for is uniformity." And so there's also just a couple of different components to the Stanton Springs Business Park Ordinance versus your current mixed-use business park, which is one, we have a little bit more stringent standards about what types of companies can come in and what's a permitted use versus an accessory use. And then the bigger one is we have a tier system, and tier one are for the light industrial companies. That's for the Takedas, the Facebooks, the Bay Mares. And then tier two is for more of the commercial retail development. So in current Stanton Springs, tier one is everything on the interior parkway, and tier two is everything fronting on Highway 278. And so as we adopt this, and we'll talk about the specific property later, it will just be a tier one for now, but we can envision going down the road as it develops and we see, you know, a difference between the interior of what would be a new parkway and the 278 corridor, we would want tier one and tier two distinctions. And then from there, there's just very small tweaks between some, you know, different setback requirements in your ordinance and the one we're asking you to adopt. So with that, again, we are requesting that you adopt the Stanton Springs Business Park Ordinance. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have, and Shane is with me as well.
Any questions for Ms. Gray? Thank you, Ms. Gray. You have some time reserved if you need it. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for comment. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request, please step forward. Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition of this request, please step forward.
Can I ask you what Bay Mare is? You can ask if you agree with what you have decided.
Okay. Anything else? I believe the question was, would, to define what Bay Mare is, and that as of yet cannot be announced. I'm assuming that will come pretty soon. Anyone else to speak in opposition of this request? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
Well, motion from Councilmember Shelton, a second from Councilmember Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion passes. Next item is a rezone of a parcel C-1590001 on Highway 278 and I-20, 514.41 acres, to place this parcel into the recently created Stanton Springs Business Park North.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The property is in the blue with the red arrow. This is, like you said, 514.41 acres. It was zoned as mixed-use business park. The request is to rezone the 514.41 acres and parcel ID C-1590001 on Highway 278 and I-20 to the Stanton Springs Business Park zoning. This says that this is, this property is at our Gateway Interchange, and the Interchange Character Area greets our visitors and commuters as they exit Interstate 20. Also appropriate in this character area are large-scale industrial uses, like Ms. Gray said, and employment center due to the ready access on I-20 and railroad and utilities. By adding the Stanton Springs Business Park zoning to this property, it would be beneficial to the recruitment and expansion of that type of industrial development. The district is currently adopted in all the counties, and the Stanton Springs zoning stretches into Newton, Morgan, and Walton. I would like to state that the Planning Commission did make a recommendation to Mayor and Council for the Stanton Springs Business Park Zoning District, and they also made a recommendation to Mayor and Council to rezone the parcel C-159001 to Stanton Springs Business Park Tier One zoning. All were in favor.
Any questions for Barbara? Ms. Gray.
Very good. Well, hello again. Thank you very much for adopting the ordinance. The next step for us in our quest to develop Stanton Springs North is to come before you and ask to rezone a piece of property. It's a total of 677 acres. If you'll go to the next slide, you can see. It totals 677 acres. 514 of those are in Walton County, city of Social Circle, and then the remainder is in Morgan County. So again, more of what we talked about with dual footprints and the need to have uniform zoning. And so that's what we're here tonight, is to ask you to adopt this first property into your Stanton Springs Business Park zoning. Next slide. As Ms. Barbara mentioned, this is very much consistent with your current and future plans. It's in the Gateway Interchange Corridor Character Area, sorry, which has now been also amended to accept this zoning into it. Just to the south of this property is, of course, Stanton Springs, which is consistent with this zoning. Across Highway 278 is what is now Stanton Grove, owned by Newton County, also consistent with this zoning. Benefits of rezoning this property, as you very well know, it will bring additional jobs and tax-based investment into this community. It also represents a very first big step in a partnership between the city of Social Circle, the JDA, and the four counties, and recruiting these large industries to our So with that, short and sweet, but our request is, again, that you rezone the 514 acres from the mixed-use business park to the Stanton Springs Business Park zoning. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll do the same and open the public hearing for public comment. If there's anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this request, please step forward. If there's anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of this request, please step forward.
I have a question.
Can you, can you come, come to the microphone, please? Please, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Molly Broadnax, and I live at 1942 Highway 278. My question is, where will the entrances to this portion of Stanton Springs be? I know that part of this property goes all the way up to Davis Academy Road and Lynch Road, which would definitely affect where I live.
I will ask Ms. Gray, thank you for your comment, I'll ask Ms. Gray to address that when she comes back up. Or Mr. Short.
I'll try and look at you a little bit, too. So currently, the piece of property that we're requesting, that we're purchasing and requesting rezoning doesn't go up to Davis Academy. It just goes to Lynch Road, but it doesn't go quite that far. There's a track between us, and the Bowdens own some property, and the Mitchell family owns some other property between us. At this moment, there are two entrances off of Highway 278 near I-20. We have no intention of moving those entrances at the moment, but they would still remain at Highway 278 near I-20. But they would still remain at Highway 278 near I-20.
Is that your, I, the Mitchell family that owns that way? That is the, the Mitchell Development Company, something like that. So, I know that all of that, there's a portion of this East Atlanta main site that's mine for standing?
Yeah, we, we don't own that property. The Joint Development Authority does not. And is only purchasing the portion that you saw on the screen that's in the City of Social Circle. Right now, we can't control what happens outside of that at all. But that's all that we're purchasing right now.
Okay.
Yeah. There's the, that's it right there.
Or the, this is the property outlined in red? Is the part in Social Circle that is being proposed? Did you want to see the other one?
Yes, please.
Okay.
It shows the normal county portion.
Okay.
That, that is the Walton portion. That's the Walton portion. Okay. If you go back to that same slide.
Okay.
I can show you real quick. The triangular piece to the right that goes down toward the interstate where the trees are, that's in Morgan County. Everything on the right side of that red line is in Morgan County.
So, this is the red line?
Yep. So, what you see in the tree area that juts out there and comes down at a, at an angle toward I-20, that's the Morgan County piece. And we have not went to the county to proceed with rezoning at this time. And, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
So, the top portion up there, Shane, in the, I guess, was it like houses or something was laid out at? What is, where is that at?
Okay. So, the Lynch Road there that goes up toward Davis Academy, what's on the left side is, is Walton County, and what's on the right side is in Morgan County.
So, I think Councilmember Jackson was looking at, can you see the cursor? This area, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's a residential area.
Existing.
Existing residential.
That's Hancock Drive, Cole Drive, Darrell Drive. And that is not within this rezoning application.
And north of that, where you see the big area belongs to the State of Georgia Department of Natural Resources. And the track just below that, where you see the blue line, is the Mitchell track that we were just referring to.
Which is also not part of this application.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Shane. Okay, I think we, we sort of got away from those in opposition by asking some questions. I'll ask again if we have anyone here to speak in opposition of this request. Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Donnie Bowden, 2114 Lynch Road. I would just like to request that the adjoining properties on Lynch Road with the Malcoms and the Bowdens, that a 100-foot natural barrier of timber be left in place.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Ms. Gray, do you have any, anything else to add to that? Mr. Short? All right. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion and/or action.
The 100-foot natural barrier that he's asking for, can someone tell me what would that look like? Is that, you know, something?
Nothing in there, please.
Anything in there, please?
The ordinance that's currently drafted does not have that large of a buffer. Typically, when we're dealing with these large industrial clients, they want to use every square inch of the property. Currently, the property that we're rezoning is completely wooded. And so, I mean, at this time, we would ask that additional buffers not be added so that we're not limited in how we're marking.
I'm sorry, could I ask you to speak at the microphone? The audience and the camera can't hear you.
Do I need to repeat any of that?
Please.
Yes. So, we would ask that 100-foot buffers not be added at this time to help us continue to be able to market the property to a lar, large array of industrial uses. Any other questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Of a motion from Councilmember Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Shelton. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. The next public hearing is our fiscal year 2021, 2022 operating budget. Sherman?
Thank you. The recommended operating budget is available online at the county, I'm sorry, at the city website at socialcirclega.gov. All the details are there. I will give an overview, just a high-level overview this evening. The operating budget process, development process, takes many months. And this is a schedule that kind of shows where we are in the process. So, this evening is the first public hearing on the operating budget and millage rate. And there will be another public hearing on the mill rate on June 3rd, prior to the work session of council, and then, a third public hearing on the budget and the mill rate on June 15th, which is the council's regular meeting, after which, the council will take action, consider action on the budget and the millage rate. The operating budget was developed considering the city's comprehensive plan, vision, and work plan, accomplishing council's strategic priorities that were defined by council for the period from 2020 through 2022, addressing the concerns and service needs of the community and city advisory boards and commissions. It focuses on continuation of our infrastructure investments and implements our vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, supports local and regional industrial and economic growth in partnership, and some of which we've heard this evening, expands transparency and access of services to citizens, supports staff growth, training, and retention, which supports customer service, and provides, continues to provide current city services effectively, efficiently, and professionally. The total budget is approximately $18.5 million. It is comprised of the general fund. The pie chart shows each fund in relation. The general fund recommended budget is about $5.6 million. The water and sewer fund, $7 million. The gas fund, $4 million. The solid waste fund, a little over $368,000. Confiscations, and our sploshed for the current six-year period at $1.1 million, for a total of $18,558,443. In the general fund, no city millage rate increase is requested or included in the projections. The current mill rate is 7.9 mils. There is a tax digest growth of 6% projected, and that is a combination of new value due to growth and reassessment of existing properties. Sales tax receipts are projected to remain at current levels, which is higher than was projected for the current year. We expected a much stronger restriction or shrinking of sales tax due to the pandemic that we did not fortunately experience in this area. So, sales tax receipts are projected at current levels. We still have a payment in lieu of taxes included in the budget from the utility funds, gas, water and sewer, and solid waste, which support lower millage rates. The general fund balance is near our target levels, and that is our rainy day fund. There is no use of fund balance included within this budget. And there are still significant general fund capital projects that are deferred because the revenue is not there to do all that we would like to do. The general fund revenues breakdown is on the pie chart to the left. The largest part is taxes, and that's a combination of property taxes and local option sales taxes, as well as the other more minor taxes. The large blue chunk is other financing, which includes our payment in lieu of taxes from the utility, the various utility operations that the city manages. In expenses, the largest expenses are police administration at about 30%. That's the large green portion to the top right. And then, fire, which is blue on the bottom portion. And you see between police and fire, our public safety is a little better than 55%. Then, in the pink-red, we have highway and streets administration. And then, finance administration, which includes our building permits processing, are the next larger sections of that pie. In the water and sewer fund, we have a stable outlook. The revenues included in this fund reflect the city's receipt of a CDBG grant award, which will be $682,000 in the recommended fiscal year. It was a total award of $750,000, and the difference has been expended in the current year on design. Construction will be next year. It also reflects the American Rescue Plan initial allocation to the city of $725,000, which the council determined at a previous work session to be dedicated to improvement in our water and sewer infrastructure. The second portion of that allocation would be reflected in the following fiscal year. So, that's the first half. There is a rate increase of 2.5% recommended to the water rates and sewer rates, which enables us to continue our investment in water and sewer infrastructure improvements. In the water fund, the pie chart to the left identifies the major components. The green is the water distribution system investments. The blue is the water treatment plant. The red to the left is our wastewater collection system and treatment plant. Then, the other financing uses are debt service and payments to the, in lieu of taxes, to the general fund. In terms of expenses, the largest portion is the green, and that is our capital outlay. So, that's our investment in infrastructure. Then, the other parts of this are personnel services, which is in the blue. That's our staff. Debt service in the red, which is, as the council is aware, a support of our financing of our capital improvements. And then, the others are contractual services and materials and supplies. So, the water and sewer rates, as I mentioned, are recommended to increase 2.5%. And that supports the current infrastructure invest, continued infrastructure investment. So, the water rate, the proposed water rate will be $1.64 per meter. That's our fixed meter fee, plus $10.51 per thousand gallons. The sewer rate would be $9.94 per thousand gallons. So, at 3,000 gallons, the average customer's total water and sewer bill would go from $61.44 per month to $62.99 per month. And that's a 2.5% increase. In the gas fund, rate increases are also recommended. Social Circle is actually the lowest rate in the region right now. And our industrial gas usage is steady and gradually increasing. So, the components of natural gas costs to the customer are the wholesale cost of gas that Social Circle pays to purchase the natural gas, and then, the customer charge or meter charge, and then, the distribution charge. So, the city establishes the customer charge and the distribution charge. We don't control the wholesale cost of what we pay for gas. So, in terms of our gas fund expenses, the largest part, or the light green, is the wholesale cost of gas. So, that's the biggest part of our natural gas fund expense. Then, the next largest part is the support that the gas fund pays to the general fund. That's the light blue. And then, the red is our capital improvement projects. And then, the pink, green, and blue are the, are personnel and contractual services. So, these are the gas rate increases. They're not quite as simple to describe as the water and sewer because each class of customer has a little bit of a different meter or customer charge versus a distribution charge. In all, the overall increase in gas rate is about 6%. And we would still be amongst the lowest couple, three gas providers in the region. In the solid waste fund, Social Circle contracts our refuse and recycling collection under a multi-year contract that was rebid competitively bid last year. That contract includes an annual price increase, which is tied to Consumer Price Index marker for refuse collection. So, the contract increase for next year will be 3.5%. And so, we are recommending that the customer rates be increased 3.5% to support that. That monthly bill would increase the refuse and recycling collection charge monthly from $15.99 to $16.55. Also included within the operating budget, overall, your city employee provisions. And of course, our staff are the resources through which we provide public services to the community. There is one new position recommended. That is a utility locator. Because the city owns underground utilities, anytime that somebody is doing work, planning construction, digging a hole, they have to notify to a one-call number. And every owner of an underground utility is required to go out within a short period of time and mark our utilities to avoid damage. So, because of the activity in the area, those, those calls have basically taken over a portion of our gas group. So, we need to have a position that is dedicated to just doing that. So, the cost of that would be split between the water fund and the gas fund because those are our underground utilities. Other than that, there are no additional new positions. There are some reclassification of existing positions to enhance career track capability for our staff retention, and also, improve service oversight. The rights-of-way manager position, which is reclassification of existing position, will supervise the street, cemetery, and water distribution functions. A fire sergeant position will be created per shift. And again, that's a reclassification of an existing staff position, not new additional employees. And then, there would also be a police corporal position per shift. Similarly, reclassification of existing positions, not new employees. Not added employees. The, in addition, there are market rate salary adjustments recommended for specific positions based on a benchmarked study for market rate changes. There is a cost of living increase to all the city's salary scales of 2.5%. And that's related to inflation. And then, there are merit increases of 2% proposed for employees meeting or exceeding expectations. There are no changes proposed in health insurance or benefits. This is just an overview of the city's organizational chart. There are five major departments, police, public works, which in total is 25 people, finance, downtown and transit, and fire department. The public works department includes wastewater treatment, water treatment- The public works department includes wastewater treatment, water treatment, environmental compliance, gas, streets and water, and cemetery. To date, the council has heard the budget presentation and has held a work session on it, and their direction thus far has been a request to repurpose projected or proposed expenditures in the upcoming SPOLOST year from drainage improvements to a sidewalk improvement on Holly Street. Also to initiate, reprioritize sanitary sewer projects to address replacement and relocation of a forced main, and also to provide additional study on some specific positions under the market rate study, which will be brought back to you at your next work session on June Next steps on the budget. This chart shows where we are right now, the public hearing on the operating budget and the mill rate. The next steps would be public comment this evening, another public hearing and work session for council discussion and direction on June 3rd, another public hearing on, I'm sorry, June 18th? 15th? 15th. Sorry about that. Another public hearing on June 15th at the regular council meeting, and then council's adoption of the operating budget and millage rate on June 15th. The budget would, the annual budget year begins July 1st. I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor, open the public hearing for comment. If there's anyone here to speak in favor of the proposed budget, please come forward. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry, we do have someone.
My name is Will Goodrow. I live at 460 Crossroads Drive in Town Park. I want to talk about water pressure. Several months ago, well, when David first was elected, y'all hired a water engineer. He came out to my house and met with two or three of the neighbors. We checked the pressure in about 22 homes that morning. And on the outside, the water pressure was 40 pounds, which is the absolute minimum that you can legally give us water pressure for. So if that's the case, then we should be paying the absolute minimum for water. And here you are wanting to go up on the water. I can understand the gas. I can understand some of the other stuff. I don't understand water. I've been coming to these meetings for 14 years. One of the nicest neighborhoods you have in this city is over there, and they, they can't hardly draw water for coffee in the mornings. It's pathetic. And this engineer, when he came out and talked to us, he had done some studying, and he said, "When Town Park was first built, it was strongly considered that Walton County Water was going to come in there. Walton County was going to supply water for that subdivision, because it was going to be a big one." And I understand that Walton County Water is right up there, just beyond Freshway. Is that correct? All you gotta do is run a little line right down there, right in our neighborhood, and the problem is solved. And he said that, and he's the one that told me that that could be done, it wouldn't be all that expensive, and it would solve our problems. How long you been in here, David? A year and a half?
Yes, sir.
Year and a half later. Hadn't heard another word. Found out tonight, he doesn't even work here anymore. I guess his ideas were too good, and y'all had to get rid of him. But, you know, I, I don't want to be a smart aleck. I just, I just, y'all don't understand. The hard, you know, you, you go to take a shower. You know, most of the time, the water is kind of muddy-looking. It's never crystal clear. And you call and tell them about, "Well, just run some water off." Well, you run some water off, and the next month, you jump from 4,000 to 6,000 gallons, and your water bill has gone crazy. So we can't do that. You know, they keep telling us, "All they gotta do is fix downtown, that all the water coming from the tank goes through downtown." Well, about a year and a half ago, y'all had all the streets torn up, putting water mains in. You run a new line down to the mail street and quit. Is that correct? You know, all you had to do was go one more block to get into our neighborhood. Now whether they got more water pressure or not, I don't know. Now, other thing I want to talk about is the general appearance of our main street. Surely, God, somebody is riding up and down that street, and they seeing weeds, knee-high houses that's about to fall in. It's one asbestos siding house up there. I thought that was illegal. Nothing is done. Nothing is done. You don't come to the neighborhoods and pick up garden trash anymore. You stop that. But yet you wanting to go up on our taxes. This is what makes people unhappy, and we don't want to be unhappy. This is the greatest place in the world, the best place I've ever lived in my life. And I have lived all over this country. Ain't gonna move, but I ain't gonna stop hauling for water pressure either. So do your job and get us a water pressure. If it takes getting water from Walton County, went up to some friends' houses that live in Walton County, 67 pounds of pressure in the line. 67. You go in there, in their kitchen, and cut the water on it, knock the glass out of your hand. It can be done. It ain't gonna cost arm and a leg. So let's do it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrow. Anyone else speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion. There will not be a vote tonight on this item. This is, all of this will be voted on in our June 15th meeting. Is that correct? June 15th? So there'll be another, two more public hearings prior to that discussion by the council.
So where are we at on water pressure down there? Because I remember when I first got elected, and that was an issue. And here we are, you know, going into another budget and discussion, and we're still having issues. And I think we did talk about one time, trying to meet Monroe with their trunk line, or, you know, and getting water in here. So where are we at? What we looking at? What, what can we do in this budget that will help Towns Park and in the future try to look into Monroe?
So I think the best answer to that question is for us to bring the engineer back to your June 3rd work session. The city did a master plan on the water system, and the, it's, it's a network. It's not really a one-way pipe feed. So there are, were $20 million worth of improvements that needed to be made to the water system overall to address capacity, future capacity, and current condition and service concerns. And so there have been a, the city has done probably $5 or $6 million of those improvements thus far. And I think the, I think the best way to answer your question is to come back to your June 3rd work session with this specific concern about pressures in Town Park, what we've done, and what is left to be done that can address that. And then we do have a connection with the county water. The city does have an interconnection with county water that is north of Freshway. There are differential pressure zones. And I think the, the best answer is to kind of, let's bring that question back, or the answers to that question with the expert who can provide that information to your next work session, along with, is there something we can do or reprioritize in the recommended budget to address that specific concern?
Also, has there been an analysis of, of water pressure citywide? Because I know also over in my area, we have low water pressure also.
Yes, that citywide mapping was done first, because there was no map, and then modeling, because the water system is, it's an interconnected network. It's a pressurized system, and, you know, flows go both directions, and different constraints in the system affect pressure variations at specific places in the system, as well as high demands at specific places. So it's a, it's a computer model that is required to really look at why a certain issue is happening in a certain location, and what fix affects what issue. So we do have that model. We, we hired a consultant to do that. The consultant maintains and monitors that model, and when we have projects that are recommended, or they, they participate in recommending the next priority projects, or when we have a new customer or change proposed, they model that impact to determine what the pipe size should be, and how far and how long. So we do have that information, and I would be happy to have that brought back with the consultant to your work session.
Okay. Thank you.
We worked, we worked in the worst areas first, is what we spent the $5 million on so far.
That's correct. It's sort of a links in a chain. You know, we had to address the worst constraints, or else the other area improvements wouldn't have improved, because we would still have had a constraint prior to that. So that is what's behind the sequencing of the improvements.
Any other discussion? Ms. Sherman, a question for you. How long is the presentation on property tax mill rate?
10 seconds.
Tracy, you need to leave at 7:45, is that correct? Okay. Let's proceed.
The current city millage rate is 7.9 mils. The recommended millage rate is 7.9 mils. So there is no change recommended. Now, the tax digest, or property values that the millage rate is applied to, is affected each year by the county assessments. And as I mentioned previously, the increase in the digest is a factor of new growth and reassessment of existing property. When the reassessment of existing property leads to an effective increase in taxes, that's considered a tax increase, and so requires this public hearing. So the increase is, that is related to the reassessment of existing property is 1.86%. The proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of $100,000, based on that, is $5.576. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. This is also a public hearing. I'll open the floor for comments. Anyone in favor, please step forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please step forward. Hearing and seeking none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion. Once again, there is no action tonight on this. This will be voted on June 15th. Any further discussion by the council?
This is, this is not taken into if somebody appeals their assessment that they've already put on. So if those get tuck off?
This is based on the estimate, the latest estimate we've got from the county assessors, and it can change a little bit. Typically, it would go down. It's not going to go up if some of, if some of the appeals are successful. And typically, we'll see that change between now and July, but it's usually a very small percentage. So this is the maximum increase.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are in recess until 8:05 PM. Okay, it's 8:05, I'll call the meeting back to order. The next item up on our agenda are the financial statements.
So in the general fund, our revenue received thus far through April is 96% of projected. Last year at this time, it was 84%. Our expenses are at 81% of projected, and last year at this time was 82%. So the general fund is on track. In the water fund, our revenues are at 64% of projected. Last year at this time, they were at 50%. And the difference is, we had projected receipts of our Jifa loan of $2 million that we've only been reimbursed thus far, 25% of that. So just looking at the operations, we've received 86% of what was projected. So we are on track for the year in water fund. Our expenses are at 76% of projected, and you see in the pink and red, our capital projects are at almost 90% of expenditures there, and last year we were at 46%. So we will be seeing shortly the reimbursement of those expenses through the Jifa loan. In the gas fund, our revenues are at 80% of projected. Last year at this time, it was at 78%. Our expenditures are at 87% of projected, and the reason for that is we've completely, we've completed our capital projects. And then last year, our expenses were at 70% projected. So the gas fund is also healthy at this time. In solid waste, we have received 85% of our projected revenues for the year, right at where we were this time last year, and our expenses are at 74%, which is also right at where we were this time last year. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have. I believe the staff went to the soda machine and didn't quite make it back yet.
Any questions for Adele? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the financial statements. Motion from Councilmember Shelton and a second from Councilmember Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Each of you should have had an opportunity to review that, and if there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept, I'll make, to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Shelton and a second by Councilmember Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next up, old business. First item on, under old business is a, the farmers' market rules. Do we have someone to present? Do we have someone to present those?
Believe they're still at the Coke machine.
Yeah, the coffee shop.
Would it be out of order for us to move to the new business, which Susan could handle?
We, we can do that without objection from the council. Okay, we'll move to new business. That item being Stanton Springs North Agreement with the Joint Development Authority.
This agreement is for Stanton Springs North would be an agreement between the city of Social Circle and the Joint Development Authority. It was discussed at the work session. It is included in the packet. In general, this agreement creates Stanton Springs North, as was discussed earlier this evening with the adoption of the Stanton Springs Business Park zoning district and the rezoning of a piece of property. So the, the conditions in this agreement include that Social Circle would adopt the zoning district consistent with Stanton Springs. The JDA, or Joint Development Authority, agrees to allocate 5% of the net tax revenues of what happens within Stanton Springs North to Social Circle. Each county and city shares their percentage of the net tax revenues with their respective school system. And of course, the other counties are Morgan, Newton, Walton, and Jasper, based on the actual millage rates. The JDA would designate the individual that would have the sole authority for economic development negotiations within Stanton Springs North. The JDA would designate the centralized inspection and permitting so that anyone developing within Stanton Springs North would only need to deal with one entity. And it also requires that Social Circle would support the JDA in service delivery strategy amendments related to water, sewer, gas, and fire. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have. And Shane Short and Andrea Gray are also still here, should you have any questions.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal to enter into the agreement with the JDA.
Motion from Councilmember Shelton and a second from Councilmember Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, before we go back to old business, we'll continue on with new business, election Is that you, is that you, Susan?
I believe that's me.
You, Susan?
You have attached to your packet a draft resolution which appoints Susan Roper as your election superintendent. There are a couple of yellow highlighted areas in the, in the proposed resolution. If you've looked at it, it's the part about where the general election will be held. We are still talking with Walton County. They've not determined for sure. We, we suspect that it'll be this building. However, there is a East Blast on the ballot for all of the school systems, including Social Circle. And so Walton County elections will make, be making the determination about where the election is. It's not just going to be a city election. It's going to have a Walton County matter, I mean, a county matter on the ballot. So she said that Jenny Phillips, who was our contact person with the elections, said that she was waiting on a determination by the elections board to decide about the location. And then the second question was the length of the qualifying period, which is the next item on the agenda to talk about. And so once those two are determined, then the city attorney can tell us how we're going to move forward with that. If they adopt this resolution tonight to appoint me, is it okay for these two items to be, to be determined in the resolution? Or how is that going to hap, how's that going to work?
Perfectly fine to give the election superintendent authority, but I would recommend that it come back and get blessed on a consent agenda in the future, just, you know, as, as part of this, they can go ahead and give her the authority to fill in those blanks.
Okay, the, the second one will get covered in just a second, but the first one, we won't know until the county determines. So that's the first item, Mayor, is the resolution to appoint me as the election superintendent for the general election in November.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion, a second by.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Shelton and a second by Councilmember Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, brings us up to the qualifying period.
Georgia Election Code sets out the qualifying period to be a specific week, and that is August the 16th through the 20th are the parameters of that week. But, but they give you a little bit of leeway within that week saying that it has to be at least three days, but not more than five days. So the question is, are we going to have a three-day qualifying, which would be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday? That's the 16th, 17th, and 18th of August. Or are we going to have a five-day qualifying, which would be the whole week? And they start, it starts at 8:30 in the morning and ends at 4:30 on Friday afternoon. So what is your pleasure?
If somebody knows they're going to run, they know. I'd say do three days.
Yes, sir. I would, that is my recommendation, if you read the memo. In previous elections, the cities held the qualifying Monday through Friday. Reducing the qualifying to Monday to Wednesday would free up substantial staff time and would allow the city to transfer the qualifying data to Walton County sooner so they can begin the process to ready the ballots for the election.
Steve, is that your motion?
Yep, I'll make it a motion.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Shelton.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we now have a three-day qualifying period. Next item will be the early voting in Social Circle.
I had the, this discussion with Jenny Phillips as well, with Walton County elections. And the question is whether or not the city is going to host a early voting for the general election coming up in November. Traditionally, we have done that. Last year, when elections were a bit rocky and they had to cancel and started back again, we, we didn't do it for that second period. But traditionally, we always have. And Walton County is hoping that we will. They, they really think it's the better thing to do is, because Loganville's going to have one and Monroe's going to have one, and it just makes the best sense for Social Circle to have one as well. The city, well, the schools will pay half of the costs for the election because they have the East Blast on the ballot. The estimated cost is going to be somewhere between $4,500 and $5,000 to estimate. We're required to hire three people all day, every day, for three full weeks with two Saturday options to work the polls. Well, it's, it's considered polls even for early voting, but it's, it's not seven to seven, it's just eight to five. So the question is if, if the city is interested in hosting.
Don't they have a superintendent and two?
Yeah, they, they've got elections also.
That's what I was going to say. They got election also.
So when they split the, the school system, they, they, so when you say they split the costs, they're going to split the cost for that as well?
Yes, sir. And, and we're used to that because the school usually pays half of our elections anyway. The question's going to be is where, where that location is going to be. We're still up in the air about that. It's obvious they wouldn't be able to use this building because school's not going to be able to give up this room for, for three weeks. We really don't have a room.
Traditionally, use City Hall.
And it's really not large enough. We're hoping that the community center will be done. And the estimated time for that, I believe the city manager told me, was September. And if that all works out, they'll do that. But that's also to be determined by Walton County, not us. They'll make that decision. So the question is whether or not the city is going to support the cost to split the election, cost for early voting in Social Circle.
And the other location potential was the community room?
Well, we talked about that, but the problem with the community room is that gives the seniors, it gives them an out for three weeks. And they are currently back up and running.
There's not a room at the library anymore?
You know, I talked to Amy about a different meeting at the library, and she said that the space down there is very small, that the, that conference room in that building is just really not very big and access to it is not, it really doesn't flow well enough.
Well, that ain't, that really, I mean, that ain't our problem, find somewhere for them to hold it. I'm going to let them worry about that.
It, it would be if we were the only ones on the ballot, but since Walton County's got something on the ballot, it'll be a, a supported effort by that office.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve early voting in Social Circle.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Price and a second from Councilmember Shelton. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll move back up to old business. And by the way, staff is in trouble for not making it back here on time.
My apologies.
So we have, first item, we have the farmer's market rules.
Yes, so based on my presentation from the work session, my recommendation is to ask the council to adopt the 2021 Farmer's Market Guidelines, including the rules and regulations. Those should be attached to your packets. The only additions this year were the changes in parking. That was that vendors were asked not to use Ware Street for parking. They may use it for unloading only. And vendor parking is strictly enforced because of the visitors to the park. So vendors were asked to park in the gravel lot off of Sycamore or on the north side of Sycamore, opposite Villa Pizza.
Are, are we going to be able to maintain that? And the reason I ask is, I believe you and I had a discussion about last week, and the farmer's market was supposed to be there Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Did no one just show up or?
We have vendors that are signed up to be part of the farmer's market. We've just had difficulty in coordinating for them to, to come because of other scheduling conflicts. But we do have four other vendors that are scheduled. And I have, one, I know at least, that does produce and jams and jellies similar to what our other farmer did. But they grow all of their own stuff. So their delay has been in them waiting for their produce to come in, to come in, but...
That's, that was another question I had. I was reviewing the, the guidelines, and it does state that the farmer, you know, selling vegetable, that they would be locally grown.
Yes.
Okay. Any, any questions for Amber on this?
Well, considering that mine won't open to see all this.
I'm having that same issue.
Have you got it to where you can put it up there?
No, but I have a hard copy. We can, if you want to pull up the internet, we can.
We're not, that's my issue. I'm not connected to the internet. It has fallen, fallen by the wayside.
Yep.
Mine's dropped, it's not connected.
Mine's still working.
When I try to click the agenda packet, it can't be reached.
I'm still connected to SCCS Connect.
So that's the overview, that's the little one.
Okay. Can you see it? Okay.
Where is the rental?
This is just the farmer's market, this is not rental.
Okay, this is just the farmer's market. All right. In case you can't open, I mean, it won't let you open that.
That's the rental.
All right.
I believe I have that attachment too, that the farmer's market is, is just for the vendors.
So my question about the farmer's market, because he moved to up the road? I thought we had a ordinance, the reason why we put him where we put him, because you know, he was on the side of the road selling to that one time. So is he operating there, is that fine?
I thought he had moved to another parking lot. The first location he was at was in the right-of-way of Social Circle Parkway.
That's when we, that's when we brought him.
That's when we brought him downtown because it was a very dangerous location.
Is he at 35, is he at 3500?
Yep.
He is.
And I thought we had, is it a ordinance? Is, is it fine for him to be there? Because I, I thought we, you know, we said, hey, come here because...
We, we did encourage him to come downtown and we actually, the council actually adopted the farmer's market rules to facilitate that because he was in a dangerous position. And I don't know the answer for whether he's allowed under zoning where he is. I really haven't asked Barbara to look into that, but I'll be happy to.
If he's got a business license, wouldn't he operate the same way under our peddler's thing that we done to where he could set up on somebody's property, like a flea market or something like that?
I'd have to, I don't, I don't know. He doesn't have a peddler's license. And I'd have to, I, I don't know whether he would fall under that exemption. I don't think he has a business license, no. Because a farmer's market's exempt, I believe.
Mr. Attorney?
Yeah.
So, so give me a description of him.
Talking about...
He's just selling, he's selling vegetables and jams and jellies and stuff like that off the curb in the parking lot.
Yeah.
At a business. He's in, he's, he's in a retail business, his parking lot, and they gave him permission.
Well, he needs a peddler's license for doing that, doesn't he? No, it's exempt. It's exempt.
Yeah, I think he's exempt.
Yeah, yeah. If he's got permission, he's got the facilities, and he meets the other zoning standards of that paragraph of the peddler's like, of a peddler's exemption, he's good to go. It's just, same thing with the, I mean, our example is the Chick-fil-A operation.
Yep, I thought he was, that's what I was saying.
Yep.
Okay.
I guess he wasn't in business, that's why he moved?
He didn't like the roof because they couldn't, people couldn't set up under grass.
I'll make a motion to accept her recommendations.
Motion from Councilmember Shelton and a second from Councilmember Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Friendship Park hours?
My recommendation to the council on Friendship Park hours would be to change the maximum number of hours on rental of the park from the current of four hours to eight hours. The current policies and procedures for Friendship Park state that there is a two-hour minimum and a four-hour maximum rental of the park. There have been requests for an all-day rental. So that is why the request for the change to eight hours max, not to exceed eight hours.
Friendship Park, Passion Park, that's all the parks that the city own?
Yep.
Can we also, we're up for discussion?
No, we don't have a second, yep, on that. That's your motion, Steve?
Yep.
Okay. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, now discussion.
Can we also take a look at Friendship Park in general? Because the city ran, the city ran a festival at Friendship Park, and we have more alcohol at Friendship Park than we had at Willie's or any other restaurant in town. So, can we make sure that we get the park's rules established in a plaque saying there's no alcohol? That means red solo cups, Yeti cups, any alcohol of any sort there?
Is that not in our, didn't we pass something that allowed alcohol at Friendship Park?
Currently, we have a downtown entertainment district, and that downtown entertainment district does include Friendship Park. The rules of that are that the existing brick-and-mortar businesses in downtown that already serve alcohol can purchase a permit from the city along with sweat-proof stickers. So, the alcohol has to be served to the patron in a clear plastic cup with one of those stickers on it for the, for them to be able to walk around downtown in the entertainment district with that, and that includes Friendship Park.
So, you're saying it has to be clear, and you're saying that it ain't clear?
What we're saying is that the people who had alcohol in Friendship Park did not purchase it from any businesses in the downtown district. They brought their own alcohol and walked around and got drunk and drinking without purchasing any, because we don't have anybody that has purchased a sticker that allows alcohol in the entertainment district. So, we have alcohol being consumed in our park where we have a sign, where we're saying that there's no alcohol allowed by our rules. So, we as a city were allowing people to drink and break our own rules at the same time.
So, I will say, because I did go back and look at the rules of Friendship Park after the event on Friday night, and the rules of Friendship Park do not state that alcohol is prohibited in the park. And that was because of the.
So, it don't say it?
It does not. The policies and procedures for Friendship Park do not say that alcohol is prohibited in the park, and that is due to the fact that it is included in the downtown entertainment district.
I think the application that I seen said there's no alcohol prohibited. The application that you, that was emailed, that's why I think.
For the rental of the park?
For the rental of the park. I think that may be where I got that from.
Okay, I'll have to go back and look at that.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up.
Yes, I see a couple of things that need to happen here. First of all, if we want to revisit the park policies and procedures, we need to, we didn't need to do that formally, where we define what Tyson's talking about, Steve and Teresa. Also, we are starting to have some events up there, city-sponsored events at least. So, we definitely need to post our park rules and policies inside the park where people know, you know, if they're just walking in off the street, they need to know what the requirements are. So, you know, we probably want to do that sooner than later, since we are having events there. But I think we need to have discussion whether we want to do it now or in a future meeting about policies and procedures. Do we, do we want to allow alcohol in the park? You know, those kind of outside the entertainment zone, is it specific to the park? Because we do have the entertainment zone, as Amber described, where they would have to purchase it in one of our brick-and-mortar businesses, and then they could bring it on site.
All right, let me ask you another question, Amber, about that. If the brick-and-mortar business wants to set up over there, can they do that?
They could, mhm. But they still have to serve in the clear plastic cup.
I'm going to say, I just want to know, if one of them wanted to do it, could they do it?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that, is that, is that a problem with that?
No, no.
I know we're talking about something different than what we voted on, but.
Right. The violation that Mr. Jackson is talking about is an open container violation. That's against the law. It's a police enforcement event, doesn't matter whether it's in the park or on the sidewalk or anything. The container marked is the exception to that that has to be followed. So, is, that's more of a police enforcement issue, it's not a park issue. It is a downtown entertainment district and open container violations. So, that's where your conflict is. It's a police enforcement issue, doesn't have anything to do with the park, but it can be, what Mr. Jackson is talking about can be stopped by a police department enforcement of open containers, so.
And I guess my only other question is that because back in April, I asked to rent the park, or we asked to rent the park, and we've done through all our paperwork and everything for the park, so if we vote now to not rent the park anyway, do the park rental that we got approved go away?
Nope.
No.
I just want to make sure.
Nope. Okay. We talked about the farmer's market rules, and a proposal was made not to rent the park. I see that as item number three, which is the Friendship Park fees. So, we're actually voting on item three instead of the policies and procedures and the hours.
Well, if we ain't going to rent the park, it don't matter.
Right.
Policies and procedures don't matter?
This right here don't matter. Eight to four, going from four hours to eight hours, park rental.
Okay. All right, if there are no fees, then please, Steve, if you'll restate your motion.
Not to rent any city park for any fee, nobody. They open to everybody. Anybody that wants to go can go at any time.
All right. Teresa, you got a second on that?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
One more discussion. So, do we have anybody renting the ballparks right now?
No.
I just know I seen a softball, baseball team was down there dragging the fields and cleaning up the park.
Oh, they do that.
Robbie?
Yeah.
Sorry.
The baseball team is doing it to keep the grass mowed so they can use the park.
So, their rental agreement was in lieu of payment, their maintenance of the park?
Right.
So, now there's no agreement because they can't rent the park? So, if somebody just goes down there, they can't get them to get off the field because they can't rent the park anymore, correct?
I guess we would look to, for clarity, if the council's motion is to not rent any park, then I would take that to mean that nobody rents, that we don't rent any park for any type of compensation, whether it be monetary or labor. Correct me if that was not the intent.
Steve, is that your motion?
Is that the intent? We're not renting, we're not trading labor or anything? I mean, could someone, if someone had like a game, you know, or wanted to use the park, some kind of schedule be set up and just say, hey, this is, it's been scheduled?
We're simply, we are happy to do whatever council would like. We're simply seeking clarity on council's intent.
So, to set up a schedule, to me, if we're going to set up a schedule for somebody to schedule out to use the park, that's basically renting the park without any fees. It's still allowing the public park not to be public because we just allowed them to do it, but we're not charging them to do it.
Well, in that case, then just don't rent the park, and they will have to first come, first served.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes two to one. All right. I believe that takes care of all the.